And have and have our budget director go first. I'm sure she has some other things that she needs to do this evening. So, um, welcome everyone to the first town hall meeting of the third ward for twenty twenty five. Um, I hope everyone's staying warm and cozy. This weather has been kind of challenging, so I'm sure most people here will appreciate the fact that we're doing this meeting on Zoom. Um, so we have four items on the agenda today. Budget Director Guzman, do you want to go first? I had you second, but I'm providing an opportunity for you to go first if you want.
I defer to you, Madam Chairwoman, or wherever you'd like me to go.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to go first. So, um, without further ado, uh, we have with us uh, Budget Director Annette Guzman and her her budget, I don't know what your position is, Ms. Gage Woodward, but uh, thank you for also being here. So I'll turn it over to uh, Budget Director Guzman to talk about the twenty twenty five budget that was passed by the City Council in December.
Uh, thank you, Chairwoman, and uh, Lakeisha Gage Woodward is um, the Director of Public Affairs for the Budget Office. Um, and is uh, you know, very engaged in in the community um, where she lives as well as the community at large for the city. Um, so happy to have her with me tonight. Um, thank you so much for inviting me. I know a lot of you probably uh, heard a lot about the budget process during the last um, several months. And I was actually very honored uh, for Chairwoman Dowell to invite me to come speak before you today. I have a lot of information. I don't expect all of you to digest every single thing that I'll say, just because this might be new for some of you. Others may have been well engrossed in city finances for a a long time. But I really wanted to to try to shape our conversation about the the really difficult decisions that are before both us as residents of the City of Chicago, me as Budget Director, the Mayor, as well as members of City Council as it relates to the operations of the city, how we continue to provide services, um, and the relative cost of of those services uh, post pandemic. Um, and so tonight I'm going to come before you, talk a little bit about the budget overview, um, the forecast, which is something that we um, publish every single year uh, ahead of uh, the budget development process that serves as a guide for, you know, what we're facing from a a structural uh, standpoint. Talk a little about the budget that we passed um, and passed City Council. Um, two bond ordinances, um, one of which is up before City Council shortly, another which is uh, was passed by City Council last year. These two capital programs um, support a lot of infrastructure projects that occur within your neighborhood. So just wanted to give you a little bit of information about those. And then should there be any questions, um, I can definitely answer any question. So, a lot of you know that this process happens every year. You might not know that we have to do it uh, through both state law as well as ordinances passed by City Council. Uh, first by state law, we're required to uh, both present a budget by November fifteenth and pass a budget by the end of the year. And um, under executive order as well as certain statutes, uh, there are additional dates that we uh, adhere to in order to both uh, present information transparently to the public, but also make sure that there's time um, uh, for both the Mayor as well as City Council to engage in a discussion about the the ultimate budget. And so when the Mayor came into office, he passed an executive order that requires that I work with the comptroller and the CFO to pass or to submit and publish a forecast every year that reflects three years into the future, what the city's finances look like, and that we are also going to present his budget recommendation by October thirty first of every year. As part of this past year's budget, a new man management ordinance was passed by City Council, putting additional uh, uh, kind of uh, frameworks in place that will provide much more transparency, um, um, add more steps into the process so that both City Council, but the public has a better understanding of the city's finances, um, in addition to the the documents that we publish on a regular basis. So by July thirtieth, my office will publish a mid-year budget report and mid-year hearings before City Council's Budget Committee uh, will occur no later than September fifteenth of every year, and then we will publish a budget no later than October thirtieth of each year. Oops, sorry. So those things are uh, put in place so that we have an orderly budget process. Um, most of you may not know the breadth of city government, um, but it does cover a lot. Um, we provide a lot of services and we do it, um, you know, under the auspices of the residents of City Chicago, right? You are our bosses. And so, you know, what we provide is done on your behalf. Um, and we um, we respond to a lot of requests uh, from city residents every single day. And so I just put this graphic up because a lot of people don't know all of the services that um, we provide. Um, it ranges all the way from infra- infrastructure services, your tree trimming, your garbage collection, your um, recycling, um, water uh, uh, supply, um, all of those things, whether it's, you know, we had snow today. Uh, luckily, I don't think it was enough that needed uh, snow plowing, but when we have larger snows, we have our snow piles are on uh, are ready and um, and prepped uh, in order to clear. Obviously, the biggest part of our budget, which you'll see later, is our public safety infrastructure, and that's our police, fire, emergency communications, our nine-one-one call centers, our traffic aids, uh, city development. So we are um, not only from policy standpoint, but from a functional standpoint, a huge part of of the development of the City of Chicago, whether it's housing, economic development through business development, um, uh, businesses being attracted to the City of Chicago. We do a lot of that work in-house. We also have a vibrant film office and are at the forefront of pushing artistic and cultural um, events throughout the City of Chicago. We also regulate, um, making sure that we uh, uh, ensure the that residents, but also businesses and others that participate with the City of Chicago have the proper licenses in place um, that they uh, register every single year to do business in the City of Chicago. Small businesses receive grants from the City of Chicago. We also um, do things like uh, regulation of environment, um, which becomes more and more important as we have can uh, um, more severe weather events. Community services, public health, we just went through a huge pandemic and uh, you know, what is it always talked about is that since the pandemic, we've had other public health emergencies that have kept crept up in the city, and we have an entire department that monitors that, food inspections, um, workforce development. Um, uh, we have Centers for Aging, um, we have youth job programs. All of those things are done in the City of Chicago. And then finally, we are an apparatus that uh, supports a lot of our departments as well as the fact that we uh, support our Board of Elections for voting. Um, and then we are a huge proponent of making sure that contracting is done in uh, in a legal way, and we push a lot of contracts out through the City of Chicago. We also have a department that defends the City of Chicago against litigation. So there's just a lot of activity that the City of Chicago provides, um, both uh, directly to residents and on behalf of residents. And I think that's just really important to take into account because the budget is the very thing that allows for those activities to occur. What the City of Chicago's budget doesn't um, cover, but there are aspects of within our budget are the budgets of our sister agencies, CPS, Chicago Park District, CTA, City College of Chicago, and CHA. And as of January fifteenth, you probably heard about this in the news, the Board of Education has started to transition to a fully elected board. And so while in this transition period, there's a hybrid of both appointed and elected members, CPS by twenty twenty seven will be fully elected, um, and will have an elected board through which all of their governments will be um, taken care of. However, um, irrespective of that, you know, the City of Chicago does provide uh, operational and financial support in many ways to a number of these um, sister agencies, and they they provide some of that to us as well. So it's important as we're thinking about our budget um, and and for City Council, what level of support are we providing to our sister agencies on an annual basis? So, um, earlier, uh, I think in August of last year, we published a forecast, and this is again uh, something that is uh, dictated by a executive order that was uh, issued by the Mayor as soon as he got into office. And it just reflects the trajectory of our revenues and expenditures over the a three-year period. And as you can see, um, coming out of the pandemic, the city's expenditures are rising a lot faster than our um, our our revenues. And that was a big part of the discussion uh, that happened and took place uh, during the budget process this year is what level expenditures should the city continue to maintain? How do we also raise revenues to support uh, the operations of the city? And so when you look at what the biggest drivers currently are within our budget, um, you have debt service. Um, and this is the uh, funding that supports the repayment of the uh, the bonds that the city issues for infrastructure work. So the roads, the um, the uh, the menu that we'll talk about in a second, that the Alders have the ability to work with residents in their wards to execute every single year. The uh, maintaining of our facilities, uh, deferred maintenance, as well as the building of new facilities. All of those things um, are are uh, because they're hundreds of millions of dollars worth of costs are supported through bond issuances, and we pay those off um, through debt service over the course of an amortization schedule. So that takes up about two point five percent of our corporate fund, and you'll hear me talk a lot about the corporate fund. That's our main operating fund. Those costs are anticipated to grow at a rate of about sixteen to twenty percent over the next two years alone. And so that, again, just gives you a sense of just the trajectory of those costs. You probably hear a lot of discussion about pensions. Currently, the bulk of pensions for the City of Chicago are paid through property taxes. But property taxes alone do not um, support the full cost of our pensions. Um, under state law, starting in twenty twelve, um, uh, the state put a requirement onto all municipalities to have their pensions funded by a certain percentage by twenty fifty, and that required the city to astronomically increase the uh, the contributions that we make to our pension funds in order to meet that statutory goal set by the state. And so pensions take up about sixteen percent of our corporate fund. Now, they're a much bigger cost uh, through our property tax revenue, but just on the corporate fund, they take up about sixteen percent. And they're expected to grow between sixteen to eighteen percent over the next two years as we um, have uh, anticipated the cost based on that that ramp that the state has given us. Benefits, these are, I'd say, people are the biggest cost on any budget, whether it's private sector, public sector. And not only do we provide salaries and wages, but we provide the cost of healthcare and other benefits to our employees. It takes up about eleven percent of our budget, and it's anticipated to rise by nine to ten percent over the next two years. Healthcare costs, um, most of you, if you run a business, if you um, you know, look at your own healthcare costs with your employer, you know that those costs have started uh, continued to to grow, especially post pandemic. And finally, our biggest cost in our corporate fund is our salaries and wages for the City of Chicago employees. It's about just under fifty percent of our corporate budget, and it's anticipated to grow by about three to five percent over the next two years. So that just gives you a sense of just the trajectory of our expenditure costs, leading to the conversations that we had during the budget process with uh, City Council. And so this just gives you a sense of all the different funds that make up the city's seventeen billion dollar budget for twenty twenty five. The bulk of that does sit within our corporate fund at about five point eight billion dollars. The second largest uh, part is our grant funds. Over the last hmm, uh, four to five year, four years, I should say, since twenty twenty, um, just enormous amount of of funding has gone from the federal government to municipalities, states, and counties in the wake of the pandemic. And so our grant budget grew from about just under two billion dollars to over six billion dollars. And as we spend those grants down, um, that part of our budget will continue to decline. The city has two enterprise funds, one for our airports and one for our water and sewer. And then, as I mentioned before, our debt service and our pension funds. We have a smaller amount of special revenue funds, which are restricted in how they can be used. Um, they can only be used for the purpose that uh, City Council set forth in statute or that um, that we received through um, like a um, a special order as part of a litigation. So those are restricted funds and can't be used for the general purposes of of city government. Just looking at the the corporate fund for twenty twenty five, which is just under five point eight billion dollars, the bulk of our revenues come from local taxes, and we'll talk a little about some of those taxes in a second, but these are the taxes that we are able to uh, authorize through our home rule authority. Um, but we also get a a large chunk from local non-tax revenue. Those are fees for things like uh, your business licenses and so forth. Um, that also includes uh, fines and forfeitures that the city is able to um, take advantage of if people are not not in compliance with our ordinances. And then the area that that, you know, really, um, we've talked a lot about in the last several years is our intergovernmental revenue. And that's um, the revenue that the state collects on our behalf, and that includes things like the state income tax, um, personal property replacement tax and so forth. That takes up about twelve point eight percent of our corporate fund. I will say that this area has has continues to decline a little bit year after year. Um, and it's an area of intense focus as we uh, head into uh, the state's budget uh, cycle. So I talked a little about that local tax revenue, which is our largest part of the corporate budget. In the twenty twenty five budget that just passed, City Council authorized five um, enhancements to existing taxes. Um, the lease transaction tax, which largely um, hits uh, corporations who um, purchase uh, leases of cloud computing uh, software. So think your Salesforce is your Amazon Web Services and things like that. Um, they, this rate increased by two percent, um, and this just gives you a relative um, understanding of what that means to the average person. All of these rates um, costs are based on the the behavior of an average consumer in the City of Chicago. So depending upon how much you use or you engage in a certain activity, you could be less, this this increase could be less or could be more depending upon your individual uh, behavior. The congestion surcharge, the City of Chicago has a lot of congestion, especially in the downtown uh, area. Um, in during the pandemic, uh, the city instituted a congestion surcharge in the downtown area during the week. Uh, that was extended to the weekends under this current budget, and the the rate was lowered from uh, one seventy-five to one, a dollar fifty uh, the surcharge. Uh, the amusement tax on streaming and cable, um, this is uh, a tax on streaming as well as TV service uh, went from nine percent to ten dollars and a ten and a quarter uh, percent. Um, the parking tax, um, again, another element of um, uh, you know, usage of 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 kind of congestion within the City of Chicago. Uh, it was bifurcated, two different rates on the weekend, the weekday, um, and a different rate for valets on the weekend and the weekday uh, went from twenty percent to twenty twenty-three and a quarter. Um, and again, based on how much you use parking garages or not, um, relatively a small difference based on the city's tax. And then finally, the bag tax, um, this is the taxes that uh, you or should really call it a fee that you um, incur when you go grocery shopping. The city uh, uh, rate was seven cents per bag, has raised to ten cents per bag um, for grocery shopping. So that just gives you a relative sense of the five taxes that were increased by City Council and the in um, in the final budget. Um, and what the cost difference is by by the app for the average consumer in the City of Chicago. When you turn and look at what the revenue supports, I just wanted to break it down for the corporate fund between department uh, function as well as expenditure category. When you look at department function, what sticks out to you is that almost fifty percent of our corporate fund supports our public safety apparatus. So that's police, fire, um, emergency communications, and then the uh, infrastructure that oversees or monitors CPD, which is our uh, Civilian Office of Police Accountability, our public, uh, Police Board, and our uh, CCPSA, uh, Community Commission on Public Safety Administration. So, um, that really makes up the bulk of uh, what the corporate fund supports. The second largest amount of the corporate fund is our general financing requirement. Those are enterprise-wide costs, things like our benefits for all employees, our uh, the the portion of the corporate fund that goes towards pension costs and uh, debt service, as well as enterprise costs for things like technology that supports all all departments in the City of Chicago. And then when you look at the um, the expenditures broken down by expenditure, you can see that the largest cost, as I mentioned before, for the corporate fund is personnel services. Uh, that is your um, your salaries and wages benefits and so forth. That's at about sixty percent. And then just quickly, the budget um, supports a number of strategic investments uh, in twenty twenty, uh, continuing in twenty twenty five. The One System Initiative, many of you may have heard about this. This is the expansion of our uh, uh, system of shelters within the City of Chicago. Um, the city had two different systems, one for uh, new arrivals that that kind of uh, was created in the wake of all of the busing of migrants from the border by the state of Texas. Um, that was creating a system of disparity between um, our population of unhoused individuals in the City of Chicago and those who newly arrived in city. And so we uh, expanded um, the shelter network so that anyone that's unhoused in the city uh, would be able to receive services. A rapid rehousing program is another portion of that, which is really moving those who are unhoused into more permanent solutions, providing them support so that they can become self-sufficient. Our community violence prevention um, uh, initiatives are really helping, um, you know, reduce um, uh, violence within our communities. The Mental Health Equity Initiative is a multi-pronged initiative, which is providing more mental health services to those within our communities as well as shifting our mental health response away from a law enforcement response to a uh, a mental health provider response. Um, some other ones um, are the Family Connects Program, which is sort of a model for for um, how we provide maternal health care uh, through home visits to families in in the City of Chicago need it. Um, One Summer Chicago, you've probably heard a lot about, which is our youth programming, which provides jobs for for youth uh, within our communities and is another uh, anchor for a very large plan uh, for not only community investment, but violence reduction within our communities. And then finally, continuing to provide ample uh, programming for cultural grants um, and neighborhood programming to really push people who visit the City of Chicago into exploring our neighborhoods. I'll just quickly just note that the Capital Improvement Program, uh, which is uh, it's a five-year plan every year uh, supports a number of of uh, very important infrastructure needs throughout the City of Chicago. And this just gives you a sense of how it's funded. We have a number of funding sources beyond just our debt. Uh, we we get grants, we get federal subsidies, we use TIF dollars, so uh, property tax through our tax increment districts, financing districts. And then this just gives you a sense of all the different categories of programs that the funding provides. The one I'll just hone in on quickly is our neighborhood infrastructure uh, uh, category, because that's where you find the Aldermanic Menu, which a number of you may uh, be familiar with. Uh, but the Aldermanic Menu is the source of funding that uh, Alders receive directly to provide um, very uh, customized infrastructure projects within their wards every single year. And so, um, Aldermanic Menu programs, these are the types of eligible projects, and um, uh, one point five million is awarded uh, directly to Alders every single year um, to determine what projects will be uh, um, funded through the Aldermanic Menu. For those who are interested, we not only have um, Aldermanic Menu um, for every single ward on the budget website, but you can go onto the budget website and literally drill down onto your ward uh, to see what projects um, um, have been uh, approved in the capital budget for the city. Um, and you can sort by ward, you can look at the entire city, and you can see down not only what supports it, what type of funding source, but what type of project it is. And then also on our our website, we have the Aldermanic Menu. We publish this every uh, I think, three times a year or every quarter. I can't remember. All right, finally, the Housing and Economic Development Bond, uh, two point, uh, one point two five billion dollar bond that was passed by City Council last year. Pretty historic um, uh, in its size, and it's supported by the uh, dollars that are expiring from the uh, tax increment financing districts. Um, six hundred and twenty-five goes towards economic development, six hundred and twenty-five towards affordable housing. And a lot of these programs are programs that are, can be directly applied to by residents in the City of Chicago, and this just gives you a a sense of some of those housing programs, um, whether it's home repair, um, Building Neighborhoods and Affordable Homes Program. Um, this, I won't go through all of them, but just gives you a sense of just the magnitude of uh, programming that is being provided to residents of the City of Chicago, as well as businesses who need that level of support um, through grants as well as other development projects. You know, that was fast, and there's a lot of information, and I wanted to be respectful of everybody's time. And so with that, I'll turn it back to you, Alder Woman.
Thank you, uh, Annette, I appreciate it. Um, if you have questions, please put them in the Q and A. Um, I take them first come, first served. We'll go through all that we can. So, a question, Budget Director from Sandra Jordan. It would be nice to know if it would be nice if we knew how much is collected, let's say, from the bag tax. And is any of, and does any of this money go back into paying for recycling or removing trash from the streets? If the bottled water tag goes to helping with water testing or removing lead pipes, people need to see this to maybe accept these additional taxes. Um, so if you could answer that. And then um, to Anthony Rogers, this presentation will be available on our website at uh, www.wardzerothreechicago.com. Um, I will also seek to get a PDF. Annette, if you could provide a PDF for this.
Absolutely.
I can uh, make sure if you leave your email at wardzerothree@cityofchicago.org, um, we'll send it to you. That goes to Mark Sinstack and Anthony Rogers, who asked that question earlier. So if you could go to the first question, there's one more question here for you as well.
Yes, uh, thank you, Sandra, so much for your question. So, um, la- last year, so in our twenty twenty-four budget, City Council authorized the recreation of the Department of Environment. Um, and the Department of Environment, uh, we start off small because it's going to take time to to grow it um, and and get it back to where it was several uh, over a decade ago. Um, the Department of Environment sits in our corporate fund. And so currently, the um, the bag tax um, is uh, the revenue from that is uh, collected within our general fund, our corporate fund, um, which supports the Department of Environment. As we, uh, part of what we'll be talking about with City Council this year is as we work to reconstitute the full-fledged um, Department of Environment, how does that bag tax, um, you know, how much of that will go towards specifically Department of Environment? And then the rest of it through the the rest of the fund, uh, the rest of the departments that are supported by the general fund. But it's an excellent question. I know that there's a lot of discussion about, um, and and again, this is, this is not opinion of mine. This is just, you know, there's a lot of discussion about raising the bag tax even more to support the work of a Department of Environment. Uh, but again, that's not something that's that that we have proposed in front of City Council, but again, as we love to to really um, to uh, you know, enhance and embolden the regulatory work of the new Department of Environment, those will be questions that I know will be put put before City Council and frankly, put before citizens of the uh, and residents of the City of Chicago.
All right, um, Annette, how will the recent executive orders, I I imagine this person is anonymous, uh, means from uh, the President Trump, impact the city? How is the city preparing for executive orders specifically rated to diversity, uh, equity and inclusion? Uh, will this impact grants programs for minority and women-owned businesses?
So I think first of all, you should know that, you know, the the Mayor has reinforced his commitment to the City of Chicago remaining a welcoming city, um, and um, and and making sure that we um, put ourselves in the position to withstand any specific attacks, whether it be because of a welcoming city or because of other reasons from the incoming administration. And it's not just things related to immigration, but we know that there there's, you know, we have issues related to climate um, uh, goals that are in uh, um, misalignment with the current administration. Um, so for for one, um, and I know that, you know, we've been briefing City Council on this, and we hope to release some information to the wider public soon, but we, our Department of Law has been really hard at work putting themselves in a position to defend against executive orders that are in direct contravention with the um, the policy goals, but also the policy stances of the City of Chicago. Um, and, you know, they have a little bit of experience on this because they did it during the first Trump administration and defended the city very, very well. Um, and we will be working with our counterparts at the state as well as in this uh, state, state, um, the Attorney General's office to make sure that we are well uh, prepared in uh, to defend ourselves. As it relates to grants.
Oh, go ahead.
As it relates to grants, uh, we have done an analysis. Um, again, we have experience based on the first Trump administration. We do have experience based on that, as well as pronouncements they've been making over the last several years in policy documents that we know are have been have been put out uh, on behalf of the Trump administration of where their thinking is. Uh, again, um, we have the law, you know, we are a country that is governed by the rule of law, and so we know that they cannot discriminate based on certain um, uh, rationales. And so in the way that we defended ourselves during the first Trump administration. And so in the way that we defended ourselves during the first Trump administration, we're very prepared to do that as well. And we are continuing to work with our Department of Law to ensure that we are able to defend against any claims of taking grants away from the city of Chicago because of policy disagreements with the Trump administration.
All right. And I just wanted to add to that person who did not say who they were, that this is something that I know our procurement commissioner, Charlotte Roberts, she's a very aggressive and very thoughtful person and she's been thinking about this. So perhaps at the next town hall meeting, I can have Charlotte come and give a specific comment in answer to that question. I know that Senator Matty Hunter has joined us. And Senator, if we can put you on the mic, maybe you could speak briefly to what the state is doing to address some of the DEI attacks from the Trump administration.
Am I on the mic now?
Yep.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. How you doing? Right now, we're not doing anything. We return, we've been out for two weeks working in the district and we'll return to Springfield next week where we will gather and take another look at not only the DEI, but I'm sure that between now and Tuesday, he would have probably defunded some other issues that we will have an opportunity to to discuss and come up with the strategy. But I'm, but we have a number. The legislature, the House and the Senate has a number of caucuses. We got a Black Caucus, Latino Caucus, Progressive Caucus, Women Caucus. And so normally the strategies may come out of those particular caucuses. And then the entire body from the Senate to the House will come up with a strategy. So right now, I'm not sure. It's too early to tell. But we've had some smaller meetings to discuss those issues.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Senator. Annette, there's one last question and I'd like to move on. But this person, this question is from Brian Soder. He says, "Great presentation. Thank you. Can you talk a bit about the difference between the TIF and the bond? And at some point, there was talk of using TIF money to cover budget shortfalls. Any clarity on this topic would be great. Thanks."
Yeah, so the TIF revenue is revenue that has been I should say captured within districts. They're called tax increment financing districts. They were put in place 20, 30 years ago by prior administrations and approved by the state. And that allows, the full purpose of a TIF is to capture revenues in order to help the economic development within a certain part of your jurisdiction. And so you can, you can capture those dollars for a certain amount of time, usually it's 30 years. And over, over that period of time, you can use those dollars to support economic development activities within that, that district. And so because things like roads, bridges, arterial roadways and things like that are a big part of attracting businesses into certain parts of our city, we use TIF funding to support those things as well as things like infrastructure projects for CPS, for park districts. Because all of those things are essential to building an economic, thriving economic area within that particular district. And so for the capital projects, we use a combination of a lot of different funding sources. State funding, federal funding, our, our bonds, which are, is debt that we issue into the market that's paid off over time and as well as TIF. We have all different types of funding sources. If I could just go back to that really quickly, just so you can see it. And so because of that, you know, we do use a certain portion of TIF to support that work. Let's see, it's about 6%. As it relates to our corporate budget, we do use a percentage of TIF surplus to support that and almost every taxing district does. We put out a TIF surplus report every single year around our budget season and it reflects how much every taxing district gets in that TIF surplus. And those are dollars that are not allocated to any program within a, in a TIF. By state law, we are required to surplus that to the taxing authority, which in our case is Cook County Treasurer. And then they distribute it out to the various taxing districts. So every, if you look at any of your taxing districts within the city of Chicago, they all have a line for TIF surplus. We don't, it's not a significant portion of the city's budget. It's about 100. I can't remember, it's like 170 million dollars this year. Maybe a little bit more than that. Actually, I think it's more like 130 million dollars. That amount keeps going down every single year for us. We're trying to rely less and less on TIF surplus because it varies every single year. And so we want to make sure that our ongoing operational expenditures are supported by ongoing revenue sources and until a TIF expires, you know, the amount that we'll get from a surplus varies.
All right. Thank you, Annette. I appreciate you being here today. I want to say too, for the residents of the ward, we want to know more about how TIF is used in the third ward. We have a number of TIFs. 47th and State, 47th and King, Bronzeville, 24th and Michigan. I mean, there are a bunch of TIFs covering the third ward. If you go to the Department of Planning and Development website, you can see the types of projects that have been funded over the last 20 to 30 years. So thank you, Annette. I appreciate you. And we're going to move on now to the Renaissance Collaborative, which has a new executive director, OG Eggleston. I hope I pronounced your first name properly. They have a very, they have a long history in this community and has a, they have a very exciting project that they're going to talk about. And I want to acknowledge Renaud Mitchell, who was the architect from Moody Nolan, who has done some phenomenal work, I think, in our ward upcoming. So OG, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Thank you for taking the time out today to allow me, OG Eggleston, to share the Renaissance Collaborative's newest project. Before I get started, I want to also acknowledge our Finance Committee and Real Estate Development Chair, Eric Small, who is attending the meeting today as well. I want to also thank Alder Woman Dow as well as the community for giving us time today to talk about our newest project, Abrams Intergenerational Village. And I also want to thank Alder Woman Pat Dow and your staff for your continued support. So it's not advancing. Okay, so who is TRC? TRC, the Renaissance Collaborative, is a black-led nonprofit that hyper focuses our resources in the Bronzeville and surrounding communities. TRC was formed in 1992 to save the historic landmark, the historic YMCA located at 3757 South Wall Bash through the efforts of four local churches and TRC's founding executive director, Patricia Abrams, who was able to raise 11 million dollars to reopen the Raw Bash Y in 2000. Paraphrasing, TRC's mission is to move residents to self-sufficiency by working with the residents to identify life goals and provide support to help residents reach those goals. The Renaissance Collaborative currently has a variety of real estate-related projects, starting with the Renaissance Apartments, which I just mentioned, is a 101-unit, single-room occupancy building that is actually under a $70 million renovation through RAD2 conversion, which allows the organization to utilize those funds to make the, the building sustainable for the next 20 years. In addition to that, the 101 SRO is connected to the former YMCA, which are in the process of renovating through preservation grants to ensure that we bring that facility back to use for the Bronzeville community. In addition to that, we currently own Senior Village One, which is located on the corner of For All Intents and Purposes, Calumet and 53rd Street. And Senior Village One is low-income, provides 71 studio apartments and one bedrooms for low-income older adults. In addition to that, similar to the Renaissance Apartments, TRC provides wraparound support services to all of the residents in our building as well as community residents within the Bronzeville community. We are currently, as mentioned, working on a new development called Abrams Intergenerational Village, which will, which will provide intergenerational housing for grandparents raising younger dependents and/or grandkids. In addition to that, we will provide units for individuals that are housing insecure in school. With that, I'd like to turn it over to, I'm sorry, one other slide. In addition to that, I wanted to introduce you to our AIV, Abrams Intergenerational Development Team. The Renaissance Collaborative is a developer, Prem Law Group company. You'll hear from Teresa Prim, who's on this call as well. Procreative Law, Moody Nolan, Arkin Tax, and the remaining portion of our team. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Renaud Mitchell with Moody Nolan.
Good evening, residents of the third ward and Alder Woman. Thank you as always, you know, for your accommodation, your partnership is was your kind words, you know, towards the work that me and my firm endeavor to do, you know, in our city. As OG mentioned, again, we're very excited to bring this project, you know, forward to you. Many of you in the community have been, you know, anticipating this project for a few years and know that, you know, we've had to navigate, you know, a pandemic and all of the, you know, supply chain issues and, you know, you know, budgetary challenges that happen, you know, and come along with that. But, you know, we're finally at this precipice and we are super excited about this, this development. It does represent the latest, you know, iteration in the, you know, TRC suite of, of, of projects. And as OG mentioned, you know, this one is going to be unique in that, you know, it, it really is conceived as a multi-generational, you know, environment. You know, one that basically will, you know, leverage the, the long tradition in the African-American community of, of combined or merged families and, and really kind of play up, you know, on that in a very, you know, direct way. And it's been designed to complement, you know, Senior Village One, which OG mentioned. And, and I should level set by saying this project located, location-wise, is situated kitty-corner across, you know, from Senior Village One on the southwest corner of 53rd and Calumet. So those of you in the area, you are familiar with the site. You know, you've got the Green Line, you know, train, you know, progressing south towards 55th Street. You know, serves as the westward edge, you know, of this project. But yeah, a couple of other factoids about it. It's going to be a mixed-use, you know, or I'll say mixed-use, mixed-unit topology, you know, within the building that will accommodate, you know, everywhere from studio-sized apartments to three bedrooms. Again, all of that in, with the goal of promoting, you know, in a generational environment that, that, you know, really is, is you know, suited for, for, you know, children and adults of all ages, as I like to say. Here, OG, if you can advance to the next slide, if you're still in control of the deck. Alrighty, so in terms of, you know, the project's design, a couple of things. One, scale-wise, we think it complements the existing Senior Village, you know, facility that you saw a couple of slides earlier. It's similarly scaled. It's exactly sized in terms of the, the quantity of units. That building had 71 units. This one will have 71 units as well. We've also made some design moves to try to really integrate this building in a seamless way into its surroundings, while at the same time providing, you know, props of color and vibrancy to really put a signature, you know, on this building as it's really a new way, way of thinking, you know, about intergenerational housing. The gray tones that you see, you are representative of, of multi-tonal fiber cement panels. And emotionally, we kind of drew upon, if, if those of you, again, who are familiar with this area, know that there are several, you know, really elegant gray stone structures immediately to the south view of this. And those properties actually served as kind of color and tone inspiration, you know, that we drew from in developing the color palette, you know, for this project. And so, so we really wanted to, again, create some vibrancy and some pop, you know, in terms of how we, we formed and masked the building while giving a signature to the front door where you see the yellow toned and kind of golden toned panels that really, we think, put a signature on this and the multi-story entrance really pronounces the building, you know, to the community in a way that, that hopefully will, will serve as a landmark, you know, for, for this project, you know, for years to come. You can go to the next slide, OG. Right, a little bit slow in advancing, so it's still waiting on it to advance on my end. Still waiting. Is the screen frozen?
Yeah, I'm trying, okay. I don't know, go ahead. It's not advancing on your end?
Screen's frozen on mine. I don't know if everyone else.
It's frozen.
Let me stop sharing, go back in.
I'll try and pull it up right now.
Well, we're waiting for it to come back up on screen. Cecilia Cuff, I see you in the room here. I just wanted to congratulate you and acknowledge your selection to the Illinois Restaurant Association's Advisory Council. What a big, that's big. And I'm glad to see that we have some representation from the south side on that important organizations board. Is this the slide you're looking for?
It is, it is. It looks like we're back in business. So no, Alder Woman, thank you for that. So, so yeah, just kind of taking a quick, you know, march around the building. You can see, you know, one of the other features and we'll, we'll talk about some of the, the resident amenities momentarily. But, you know, one of the things that we're also excited about is we provided a, a small roof deck amenity where your residents can, can kind of huddle and, and sit and relax, you know, and have views of the neighborhood. You know, you know, primarily facing, you know, east or towards King Drive. But depending on how you're sitting up there, you might get some north and south views you of the neighborhood, surrounding neighborhood as well. Next slide, OG. Alrighty, and then you can go to the next one. This is just a transition. So in terms of how we sighted the building, we, we first and foremost, we wanted to be a complimentary neighbor, you know, to our surroundings. And so, you know, we recognize this is a, you know, you know, six-story building. And so it does sit and nestle, you know, in a community where there are buildings of varying scales. And so in acknowledgement of that, you know, a couple of moves that we made were one, to create very generous setbacks along 53rd Street, but particularly south of our proposed building, you know, such that we could create outdoor, you know, spaces for respite and also create nice, healthy setbacks away from, you know, shorter neighboring structures. And so, you know, we're really excited about, you know, how this space will get used. It has a variety of seating types and OG, you can advance to the next slide, actually. Has a variety of seating types that will accommodate, you know, people of various, you know, degrees of nobility, you know, and various ages, you know, from, from play areas for, for younger children to, you know, areas of relaxation for, for, you know, older adults and seniors. We do provide, you know, you know, some parking, you know, in the rear, but we, we did take advantage of some of, you know, the, the urban development, you know, bonuses that are associated with your projects of this type. And so, you know, the project is not overparked and, and, you know, we don't create, you know, an intense, you know, parking environment. But the parking is situated behind the building and beneath, you know, largely tucked beneath the building such that it, it doesn't become, you know, kind of a, you know, open, you know, sort of easily viewed, you know, location. So we, we think these design moves really help nestle this building and place it, you know, on its site in a genteel way, one that's complimentary, you know, towards its neighbors. Next slide, please. Alrighty, and I made mention of the rooftop amenity. So this is a planned view of it where, again, you know, residents, you know, the building will be able to go up top and sit out and relax, drink a glass of iced tea or glass of wine or whatever. They may fancy them at any particular moment and enjoy the views to the community. Next slide, please. Alrighty, so a little bit about the unit mix. I, I mentioned earlier that it'll be a variety, a variety of unit types in this building, 71 in total. Alrighty, so a little bit about the unit mix. I mentioned earlier that it'll be a variety of unit types in this building, seventy-one in total. You're ranging from studios to to three bedrooms. And again, that's all, you know, with the the notion of accommodating a wide variety, you know, of potential residents from, I think O G made mention of, you know, those who are housing insecure, you know, all the way to grandparents, you know, that maybe you'll still raise families and younger children and being able to have larger units to accommodate that need as well. And then very quickly, I'll go through the next series of slides, which actually are vignette plans of each of the unit typologies. You know, I'll simply note here that every unit type, you know, has an accessible complement, you know, to go along with a standard, you know, unit type. And so, again, we can accommodate, you know, people with varying needs and various, you know, mobility issues, you know, throughout. And so, O G, you can very quickly kind of cycle through the next couple of slides because they all just depict, you know, the various unit typologies and and I won't get into any, you know, specifics. It's again, from studios to all the way up to three-bedroom units. And so then with the next slide, I will transition to Ms. Teresa Prim from Prem Lawrence Group to talk about, you know, the various, you know, funding sources and the next steps for the development, you know, process. So Teresa, take it away.
Okay, good evening. Teresa Prim of Prem Lawrence Group, I'm the real estate development and finance consultant for the Abrams Intergenerational Village. So just to, just do a quick overview of the sources of capital for the seventy-one unit development, we have a thirty-eight, approximately thirty-eight million dollar budget at this point, and we have a multiple layers of financing, which is quite typical for these kinds of buildings in our community. We're fortunate to have been awarded a IDA Low Income Housing Tax Credit nine percent credit award of which will represent about thirteen million or almost fourteen million dollars. We have a conditional approval from the City of Chicago for thirteen million five. We have an additional three-point-four million in soft funds from IDA as well. The City of Chicago provided early on a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar Equitable Transit Oriented Development Grant towards pre-development. The product, the building is located less than two blocks from the Green Line and is a Equitable Transit Oriented Development Site. And so we're, you know, very proud of advancing this kind of building in an E T O D. The, the project has garnered to date donations and corporate foundation and individuals of one million, one hundred dollars. And we're still seeking additional donation. We've raised about ninety-seven or ninety-eight percent of this capital stack. We anticipate they may, between now and when we break around the summer, there may be some cost increases. So we're leveraging the state's Illinois Affordable Housing Tax Credits, as well as we're able to then sell those tax, those donations from, for instance, foundations that don't have tax liability. And those additional donations are going to net us approximately another seven-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand dollars. We were fortunately awarded Federal Home Loan Bank Grant of nine-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand and a ComEd Energy Grant of one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand that's yielding this one-million-one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. There's deferred developer fee of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and TRC, the developer, is contributing two-hundred-and-twenty of its own cash reserves to the development. Our uses of fund, construction costs are running at this time thirty-one-point-five million approximately, with the mandatory five percent contingency, other soft costs and reserves of four-point-four million and a developer fee of a million. And I want to point out here, one of the things that TRC has done is minimize the amount of developer fee so they can help actualize this project, which is yielding an opportunity to reduce the per-unit cost, but to prioritize what's important to the organization is to bring these units. And I want to clarify that the building is intergenerational, that it's seniors as well as grandfamilies. And if you go to the next slide, fourteen units are actually being targeted to households with income at or below thirty percent of AMI, and they will be supported by sponsor or project-based subsidy. Sponsor subsidies are particularly associated with seven of the units that we're targeting for youth who are housing insecure but are currently enrolled in secondary education. And specifically, we are working on a, we have a soft LOI right now with City Colleges, who is also going to be building out a medical, at medical training at the Green Line. And so the goal is to target for residency in the building, students who enroll in City Colleges but who are also housing insecure, and they will serve as resident assistance to seniors in the building. There is a particular floor in the building that is currently being named, but the floor is dedicated to seniors who do not have familial ties. And so that a community to support those seniors is basically created on that particular floor. Again, the, that builds upon a model of organization that has been also early on working with TRC Home. And they, their model was called the Good Life Floor, and that name will be renamed in this particular context. But we think it builds on very much the tradition in the African community to basically support those people who do not have familial ties. Those people on those floors will be able to dine together in a, in a large dining room as well as engage in a number of other activities. The rents in the building will range those that, from nine-seventy-five to fourteen-hundred-and-thirty-five for the three bedrooms. They're all targeted at households with incomes below sixty percent of AMI, other than the fourteen units that will have some sponsor and project base. Next slide. So understanding specifically who's in this building or who's targeted to live in the building, our seniors who are sixty-two years old enough, just as a Senior Village One across the street, and then also housing insecure seniors fifty-five years old enough who are raising grandchildren. I'd also like to point out here that we've obtained a letter of intent from the State of Illinois Department of Human Services to support the grandfamilies in this building by paying their security deposit, by helping them furnish the units, and then they will provide support services from the state to those families who are families, many of whom have already been put together by the state, who had, who has those children that were then turned over to their grandparents. So it's a really important level of state support and interest in this building for that very reason. Under IDA, it's mandatory that we set aside units for persons who are disabled, and there will be seven units that will be set aside for persons who are disabled. Lastly, as I mentioned earlier, there's a seven units of housing for youth who are currently enrolled in secondary education. Next slide. Our current, just an overview of the entire project line timeline. As Renaud mentioned, these things do take time. We've been at it actually since the beginning of the pandemic. I think we started in about twenty-one. And so we're pleased to be at this point, and we're pleased that we have a significant amount of the capital secured, even though we're working through the city's final approval process and final approval of allocation of funds. We've, like I said, we are fortunate to have secured the IDA Low Income Housing Tax Credit and the Federal Home Loan Bank and other commitments. So based on the current project timeline, what we're hoping to do is to secure a building permit by June or July, give or take, and to actually close on financing June or July and commence construction in July. There's approximately a thirteen or fourteen construction period, so we hope to have the building placed in service in November of twenty-twenty-six.
Alright. Well, thank you, TRC team, for the presentation. I just want to also acknowledge Pat Abrams. This has been, I can't tell you how long I've been talking to Pat about this project, and I know that she has retired, but I'm pleased to see that you're naming the building after her. This is a great move. And I also want to thank you for meeting with some of the neighbors in a smaller setting regarding some of the concerns that they raised early on in addressing those. O G, I have a, oh, this is from Brian Sauter. "Super exciting project. Thanks for sharing. Any ways we can support?", question mark.
Follow up on, you know, as I said, we have a small bit of money and we know we're running in front of construction cost increases. I don't know how many of the residents or participants on the call are aware of the Illinois Affordable Housing Donation Tax Credit, but any individual that makes a donation to this project can receive a state credit to offset your state tax liability. So no matter how small, whether it's five hundred dollars, you can receive a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar tax credit offset. You can go to TRC's website and get more information on the ability to contribute. And of course, as the building is completed, we'll be certainly opening up that waiting, that list for residents. And it's definitely the kind of building, given the level of support services that are going to be offered, that I'm sure the organization's going to be open for volunteers.
Thank you, Raffaro. O G, now you shared something with me about two weeks ago. And I'm gonna give you an opportunity to say that here. I don't know if you can yet.
I can.
But it was exciting news, and I think it would go well over in the community. Even though I know we have a reporter here who will put it in the paper the next day. I don't know if you want to share that.
We were actually looking to do an event February twenty-seventh. I'll put it out there now.
Okay.
Reporter can, you know, put their pen behind their back until we're able to make a formal announcement. But to everyone, the audience, the great news that Alderman Pat Dow is referring to is we've been in communication with the YMCA about returning to the site, and they are very interested in returning to the site. And so we're in the planning phases of what that will look like. And as such, we will make a formal announcement once we have a formal MOU in place. So that is the exciting news, that we'd be able to make that space operational for the Bronzeville and surrounding communities once again.
And that's at the Wabash YMCA. So I'm gonna not be more specific, but anything that I can do to continue to make sure that gets over the finish line, let me know.
I definitely will.
Alright, thank you so much for your presentation. I don't see any other questions in the Q and A. So we're gonna move on to another exciting project by the Southside Community Arts Center, a longtime historic amenity in the Bronzeville community. And I'm gonna turn this over to Monique Brinkman-Hill, who is the Executive Director of the Southside Community Arts Center. Monique?
Monique? Hear me now?
I can hear you. You're a little faint. Can you?
Okay, I'm gonna step up to my mic. Can you hear me better?
It's still a little, it's not as loud as I would want it to be, but if that's what you're working with, that's what we're working with.
I'm gonna try to speak a little bit louder and just say, hopefully this is a little better. I'm speaking a little louder. I just wanted to say, one, thank you so much, Alderman, for allowing us this opportunity to come here tonight. And that heartfelt thank you comes from both me and the Board of Directors. Erin, would you pass the slide? I'll come back to this. For all of those, and this slide represents our Board of Directors, and so I wanted to make sure that I have their names: Twyla Jenkins, Brian Perry, Alicia Bunton, Phil Gant, Lance Gou, Robert Gutman, Jennifer Hale, Judy Matthews, Bill Michael, Susan Davenport Smith, Bianca Yarborough, and Rebecca Zoric. It is through the very hard work of all of us that we are here.
Monique, I think you're muted.
Yep, I am. I'm not sure what's going on, but we're gonna do, I'm gonna try to muddle through this. For those who are not familiar with the Southside Community Arts Center, we are eighty-five years old. We are the longest-running African-American arts institution founded back in nineteen forty, up under the WPA, the Works Progress Administration. Our founders included Elsie Couture, Charles White, Archibald Moutley, William Carter, Joseph Kersey, Bernard Goss, and the youngest member at that time was Dr. Margaret Taylor Burrows. Many of you may know her. She went on to leave an incredible stamp in the community. Our mission is that to conserve, preserve, and promote the legacy and future of Black art and artists while educating the community on the value of art and culture. This project, I'd like to say it's eighty-five years in the making, is really a testament to us being able to continue to do that for the next eighty-five years. Erin, if you'll pass it to the next slide. I wanted to move forward and introduce our team. We have Ann Louie on the call. She is the Principal Architect with Future Firm. Erin Habanagi, who is our managing, she's the Managing Director and our Owner's Rep from Urban Resolve. We've got Ernest Brown, President and Founder of Brown and Moen, Hansel Whitehurst, the Senior VP at Burgling Construction, and Tony Graham with Burgling Construction as well. I'm gonna hand it over to them. We've got a lot of information, and I want to make sure that, one, you can hear them, and then, two, I want to make sure that we get all the details of this incredible project before this audience this evening. So Erin, if you will.
Thank you so much, Monique, and thank you, Alderdell. Really appreciate you hosting us in this forum. You've been an amazing partner on this and many other projects in the past. I wanted to just orient folks to the site. If you're not familiar, certainly I hope you are familiar, given the eighty-five-year history of this wonderful organization and the great work that they do. But the site itself is is on South Michigan Avenue. It is bound by the alley to the east, South Michigan Avenue to the west, a church to the north, and then multi-tenant residential property to the south, all of whom we've had dialogues and sent letters, and we hope to continue to partner with moving forward. Excuse me. We've developed a vision statement. I won't read it for you. But with regard to the project, really, our key priorities here are expanding exhibition and programming space, providing for conservation and archival storage facilities that follow the best practices around museums and the restoration of artworks itself, obviously focusing on Black artists and not only the conservation, storage, archival, but the additional creation for the next eighty-five years, we hope. We also want to make the center accessible to all patrons and artists regardless of their physical limitations. And then provide for administrative offices that are conducive to collaboration and stakeholder engagement. Additionally, we want to include environmental sustainability provisions that will lower future operating costs and be better stewards of resources and also engage local and diverse business and workforce. And we'll speak to some of our grant requirements as well, not too dissimilar to the wonderful last project, which, O G, I sent you a text about the Furniture Bank, but, you know, wonderful project, so kudos there. Wanted to share with you just a little bit about our funding as well. We are largely publicly funded in this project and have multiple different grant requirements. But the bulk of our project is funded through both public and private. But the public grants themselves require from the City of Chicago, and I should give a huge shout out to Director Guzman because one of the programs she discussed today is one, this center is one of the beneficiaries there, and we're so grateful to the city for supporting this project, which requires, again, diverse and local inclusion as well as local hiring. We've also received state funding for both the Illinois Arts Council and the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, which have the same inclusionary requirements, but also require compliance with a program called Illinois Works, which requires us sponsorship of apprentices as part of the engagement. which requires us sponsorship of apprentices as part of the engagement of construction. And Tony Graham, who'll be speaking a little bit later, will talk a little bit more through the how of implementation here. But I wanted to share this with you because it drives a lot of our schedule, it drives a lot of our procurement. We've had a very robust procurement process in terms of the engagement of architects, consultants, and our general contractor, who you'll be hearing from, Ernest Brown and Hansel Whitehurst in just a moment. The one thing I want to emphasize here is that we do have a grant that is sunsetting. So we're gonna have an early release of site preparation work that's coming up in very short order so that we can spend down that capital. We've developed a really robust team, as I mentioned, a phenomenal team. In my mind, it's very much a dream team of diverse and local vendors that we've all worked together in different capacities in the past, but really just brought together some really fantastic professional service providers and general contractors, a lot of whom are neighbors, a lot of whom are local, and we're really excited to bring this team to fruition. Next, I just want to speak very, very high level, very briefly through our schedule. You know, we've engaged our architect and our full consultancy team at this point. We've also gone through our landmark review. As many of you know, this is on the Historic Register of the Register of Historic Places. It's also a City of Chicago landmark, and so we want to make sure we're very careful in the implementation of any work associated with the center itself. So we've been through our landmark committee review. We've procured and awarded general contracting, and we're right in the middle of our permitting process for site preparation, our early trade packages, as well as the vertical building itself. We're also working super closely with ComEd, and we are not working with People's Energy as we're fully fossil fuel-free. In fact, we're very pleased with our sustainability approach in terms of the help we've gotten from ComEd to implement geothermal and be solar-ready here. Similarly, we are working very closely with our team on scheduling that site preparation work and with ComEd on our temporary and permanent services there. So our intention, as soon as we get permits, which may be as soon as tomorrow, but we're thinking around February 1st, we'll begin that site preparation phase of work. And then we will continue on that, and the center will relocate sometime this summer or fall as we begin the addition process itself. And our hope is all the permits and everything goes well, as we'll reopen in the summer of 2026 to welcome patrons and artists alike back to the center. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ann Louie, who is the Principal in Charge at the Future Firm, to speak to the design itself.
Yeah, thank you so much, Erin and Monique. We're so thrilled and excited to be able to share this project with you all. I'm gonna start with some design goals that we established in collaboration with the center early in the project, and you'll see that these goals track throughout the design that we're gonna share. First, it was really accessible or important to SSCAC that the project be universally accessible. And that means that somebody in a wheelchair or wheelchair is going to be able to access every space of the historic building and the new addition. As Erin mentioned, the project is also sustainability forward, which means that the center is both kind of prioritizing, lessening its impact on the environment, as well as being sustainable and thoughtful about operational costs in the decades to come. So we're really pleased that we have a lead silver target goal, and we'll be integrating a geothermal well field in the open lots to the north of the site to focus on the all-electric approach. Throughout the design, you'll see museum-grade exhibition and storage with temperature, humidity, and lighting control. And then we've also had the honor of working with Kennedy Whiters, incredible historic preservation architect, who has been leading both research and the kind of detailed direction of the rehabilitation of the historic building. And most significantly, I think we're really thrilled to be sharing spaces for community at all scales of the building, which will allow SSCAC to continue to be a space for folks to gather. Next slide. I'll take you through each, maybe we can jump to the next. Great, wonderful. I'll take you through each floor at a very high level. And this is the ground floor of the proposed project. So you'll see on the left side of the screen Michigan, and then the alley to the right. The areas that you see highlighted in orange are the historic building. And it was really important for us with the design to establish the new addition at the rear of the lot. So it actually becomes a backdrop for the historic building and doesn't compete with the presence of the really incredible facade on the street. The gray arrow shows you the new accessible, universally accessible entry up a long ramp and stair, which mirrors the history of the front step at SSCAC where so many important historic photographs were taken. And the ground level really focuses on new exhibition and gallery spaces. Next slide. And we're really thrilled that these spaces will have that museum-grade temperature, humidity, and lighting control with both serves to conserve the collection of the gallery, to be able to commission new works, as well as to accept loaned works from other institutions. Next slide. The entry will be, as I mentioned, accessible and connect to the elevator, which means that everybody accessing the new addition will connect to the historic building through the same entry as well. Next slide. Additionally, working with Kennedy, we were able to find these images of the Historic Boroughs Gallery, especially as it was renovated as part of the new Bauhaus renovation in the early 20th century. As part of this significant historical moment, there was this kind of modern ceiling that was discovered through these historical photographs. And if you go into the next slide, you'll see that as part of the preservation of the Boroughs Gallery, we are implementing new gallery lighting, which will highlight the works that are presented there, as well as integrate opportunities for presenting new media works through new audiovisual capabilities while keeping the character and the quality and the space of the Boroughs Gallery intact and celebrated for the future. Next slide. Then going to the lower level, we often, we joke that we've learned that over the course of this project, the majority of museum visitors actually go straight to the bathroom. And anyone who has recently attended a visit to a museum with their family knows that that is very true. So we're providing bathrooms at the lower level, as well as a family restroom with a lactation room. There will also be flex spaces in the lower level that can serve as meeting rooms, whether those are for classes, for educational spaces, or could also be a space to have a yoga class. Next slide. So you'll see that those spaces currently being used for storage are now being activated as spaces for the community. Next slide. And then when we go up to level two, we describe this space, the level two, really as a kind of workspace for the center. So in the historic building in orange, you'll see office spaces for the SSCAC staff, private and shared offices. And then in the blue area, this is where SSCAC's significant collection of Black art will be preserved in collections, archives, and storage areas, as well as areas for processing and viewing so that scholars from all over the country and the world can come see the significant works that have been collected here and share their scholarship with the public. Next slide. See a little bit of offices here. Next slide. And then when we get to level three, we're really thrilled that this floor, we think of as a gathering space, the historic ballroom that you see in orange, becomes an open program area that keeps its qualities while adding code-required exiting to make the space safe and upgraded audiovisual capabilities. And in blue to the right, you'll see a new event space that opens out to a roof terrace that will give you a view of Bronzeville and the neighborhood. So next slide. This is the view of the historic ballroom, and we're really thrilled that this space will be newly accessible to people in wheelchairs. Next slide. And this event space in the new addition, where you can see the doors that will open into the roof terrace that will overlook the outdoor space, which will be activated for programming for the center. Next slide. And then we just wanted to speak quickly about the exterior wall design. This is a piece that's really close to my heart. You can see on the left for anyone who's visited the Boroughs Gallery, because the design of the Boroughs Gallery was wood paneling, anytime an artist hung a work in this space, they made a nail hole that now is maintained in the wood. So in a way, the wood panels trace the history of all the artists that have come through the center in the past 85 years. And this is a story that's well-known to anyone who's affiliated with the center, but also really special in the way that architecture starts to capture the history and legacy of the artists. So we worked with the team to do rubbings of the holes and translate these into a custom perforated panel. And next slide, that panel is now integrated into the exterior wall design of the new building so that you can see that, if you weren't familiar with the center, you might think that this is a residential building. But now the history of the center, which has been an art center longer than it was a house, is also registered on the facade. I think in this view, you also see that we've tried to maintain a kind of two-story profile, even though there's an area of the building that's three stories, to make sure this is contextual with the block, as well as with the historic character of the existing building. Next slide. Here you see that roof terrace, as well as the ramp that forms the new entry space, as well as the outdoor patio that can be an area for programming and other events. Next slide. And then I will hand it back to Monique. I think for us, the kind of beautiful moment of the design at night is that the whole patterns made by the artists in the past 85 years now symbolically let light in for the artists in the decades to come. I'll hand it back to Monique and Erin. Thank you.
Actually, we're gonna turn it over now to Ernest Brown and Hansel Whitehurst, who are builders.
Okay. Thank you, Erin, and also Alderman Dow and your staff. My name is Ernest Brown, the President of Brown &amp; Momen. This is our 37th year of being in business.
Ernest, I'm just going to interrupt you to say hi to you. I haven't seen you in a while.
It's been.
Take care. Okay.
Well, thank you. It's always a pleasure, always. And thank you, and I'll tell you about what later. You know, I can remember back in 1967, when I was a student at Dunbar Vocational High School, this was one of the projects and field trips that we went on. And it really helped to shape my existence, because I chose to go into the arts, although it was architecture and then construction management. And so it's good to be involved in a full-circle project. Myself and Hansel Whitehurst of Burgling Construction, you know, which is a 50/50 joint venture. You know, we are staples in this community. We've done many, many projects together, over 10 projects in the last 10 years, a lot of which are at the University of Chicago. But just recently, we were awarded a $103 million project, which is the Providence Hospital renovation. You know, and some questions, questions might be, well, why did you guys joint venture? Part of it is because we bring different skill sets. We're working on a project that's still being designed, that has a tight schedule, a tight budget. And from my days at, as President of a Black Contractors, we felt that us working together could help achieve all of the goals, especially that of having this project be built by people that look like the community. You know, we are well on our way. We have identified 12, the first 12 contractors, and of that, eight are from this community. You know, so I'm proud to say that, you know, we are achieving our goal. And we look forward to in about 12 months to be, for all of us to be in this beautiful space, welcoming back the community. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Hansel.
Well, thank you, Ernest. I think you've done a good job, a great job. Hold on, at the setup. Do I, can you see me?
I can see you.
Okay, all right.
We can see your handsome face. I knew that would get us.
Ernest, I think Ernest did a great job at setting this whole thing up, and I certainly, we have a great relationship and, and basically I look up to him as a good uncle, as a great uncle. So, so, you know, in the course of this business, I think, you know, he basically laid it out and said that, you know, we're 50/50 JV, we've done multiple projects together, and this won't be the last. We're looking at others. So I just want to just say thank you to you, Alderman Dow, for allowing us to be a part of this meeting, and it's great.
With that, if it's okay, Hansel, we'll turn it over to Tony Graham.
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? Thank you, Alderman Dow, for having us. Very much appreciated. I'm excited about this project. As Erin spoke a little bit earlier, we are, there's a compliance requirements on this project. Again, the standard 26 and 6 from the City of Chicago, 50% City of Chicago residency, and then the State of Illinois, the Illinois Works, 10% apprenticeship. So the plan for this is definitely always gonna be doing a couple of outreaches. Even though a package has already gone out and has been bid on, and we have subcontractors on that package, we still have a number of subs, sub-p packages that's available that we have to bid out. Erin, if you can go to the next slide.
So there's. That those numbers are floors, not ceilings.
Right. Oh, yes, that's, that's the floor. We're definitely gonna exceed that. There's a number of packages that's still available. So I mean, I put a list here that we're gonna be doing a number of outreaches starting early spring. So I'll be in communication again with Alderman's office to make sure that we communicate with her office to make sure we are hitting the correct subcontractor database in the area. Also, with the, with the relationships we have with Uncle Ernest, we are gonna definitely make sure that we hit those contractors in the community hard. But that's the subcontractor database. We're gonna also have a workforce outreach. So once we do have all the subcontractors on board, we're gonna start meeting with workforce. And so with the workforce, we're gonna meet with cardholders, apprentices, and also interns. We work with a number, this is, this is just a few. We have a number of organizations we work with. But we're gonna be doing outreaches so that the subcontractors can, we're gonna marry those people up with the subcontractors that's cardholders, because we're not gonna be self-performing. Though that work goes out to the sub database, and so that workforce will be working with them. Again, I work with Revolution Workshop, Hire360, Tools Up, Helmets to Hard Hats, BCO, AKA, I mean, a number of organizations that will help make sure that we have the workforce in the community.
And Alderman, I think we'll be coming to you for a list of local cardholders that live in your ward, so.
I look forward to that. We maintain a list of those third ward residents and also work with Robert Charles from Strategic Precision Management, who can also give you that information. I wanted to go back. What is DFS? Can you, and EI, the slide before this one?
EFS?
Yeah, what's EIFs and what's DFH mean?
Doors, Frames, and Hardware's for that. And EFS is a.
Football treatment.
Right. Treatment. It's a drywall treatments.
Yeah, spray football treatment.
All right.
Some people say stucco, but it's.
Right, that's right.
All right, just wanna clarify. Keep going.
And so the next steps for us is, once we start doing outreaches, and when I have the outreach, I'll make sure that all subcontractors through our team will be pre-qualified. There's a pre-qualification process. It does not eliminate the subs from being able to work with us. It just lets us know what capacity we can have them work in. We don't want to give someone a multimillion-dollar contract, but they're only able to, you know, do a smaller project. So we want to mirror them. We want to pre-qualify all of our subcontractors, and we do do that with every sub. Then I'm gonna be reaching out to the workforces, again, reaching out to you, Alderman, and reaching out to the local churches and everything, just to make sure that we have cardholders and people in the community that, you know, make sure that they get married to the subcontractors that is gonna be on the project. And then, again, stay tuned for the next outreach. Again, it's gonna start in spring. We're gonna be hitting the ground rolling. Once I, once I start, I'm gonna, you know, be flashing out flyers, sending them to the different locations so everybody can know, show up, so we can get, we can make this project reflective of the community.
Is that it, Erin?
If it's okay, I think Monique wants to speak about an event upcoming, if that's okay.
Okay.
Finally, thank you again to everyone, but we are having a longer or more robust. Finally, thank you again to everyone, but we are having a longer or more robust presentation on February twenty-third. Oh, is it twenty-second, twenty-third, I'm sorry, at the Apostolic Church, which is located thirty-eight twenty-three South Indiana. That is, we're going to have, that'll be at one o'clock. We'll have flyers posted as well, and we will have that posted across our social media. And that will be an opportunity to be in person for those that were not able to participate tonight. We'll have the opportunity to also be able to see some slides and some other things that will give you a more robust view of this project. It's February twenty-second. I'm sorry, I said the twenty-third, it's the twenty-second. So that'll be at one P M at Apostolic Church, thirty-eight twenty-three South Indiana. It's right around the corner. There is ample parking, and we look forward to seeing you there as well as having welcoming the community to this future space and this opportunity to participate in this long heritage of the South Side Community Arts Center.
It's a little hard to hear, so if you don't mind, I'm just going to repeat a couple key points that you made. February twenty-second, Monique is inviting you all to an event at the Apostolic Church at thirty-eight twenty-three South Indiana. The event starts at one P M and we'll show some of these graphics again and go a little bit more in-depth in the presentation. But the hope is to really welcome the community in and be able to touch, feel, look at drawings and be really engaging. And then I think Monique, I was trying to read lips a little bit there, but wanted to be very grateful to her board, particularly to Alderman Dowell and and hosting us here tonight. The community's been very gracious for eighty-five years. And she hopes that the next eighty-five years are just as engaging.
Thank you so much, Erin and Monique, and want to acknowledge Susan Davenport Smith, who is the First Lady of Apostolic Faith Church, who is on your board and a member of our community. I also want to acknowledge my Sora Twyla Jenkins, who is also on your board, and Lance Gough, who is a longtime friend and commit committed to the South Side. So I want to thank you all for being here tonight. If you send me a flyer, I will make sure we promote the meeting at Apostolic Faith Church as much as we can. There is a couple of things in the chat. One is from Karen Shine. She says that she loves the geothermal installation. And Twyla, thank you. Thank you for your continued support. I appreciate you, Sora. And with that, we're going to go to our last presentation of the evening. Again, thank you, Monique and Erin and Ernest and Hansel and Ms. Louis for your presentation. Along with Tony Graham, who I have not met, but I look forward to meeting you at some point. Moving right along, our last presentation of the night is thirty-seven forty-six South Michigan. For those of you that know this site, it is a long vacant parcel of land along thirty-seventh, along Michigan Avenue. And I'm going to turn it over to Graham Grady and his colleague Sylvia Micus to start us off. Graham?
So Alderman Dow, can you hear me? Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much, Alderman Dow, and thank you and your staff very much for accommodating us to participate in the community meeting this evening. Also, Alderman, I want to thank you for your eighteen years of service as Alderman of the Third Ward, first elected back It's been eighteen
I am not going to claim eighteen years.
Thank you, thank you for your your service. My name is Graham Grady. I'm an attorney at the law firm of T. Austin Hollister, and along with my colleague Sylvia Micus, we will be making the presentation this evening. In addition to Sylvia and myself, we have representatives of the developer, Capricorn Design and Build, who will be available to answer questions as needed. Jola Whipple, Ian Whipple, Bart Lizersek, and John Hannah, and Tom Skadalowski from Hannah Architects. But to put this project into context before I turn it over to Sylvia, we feel that it is so fitting that this project comes before you this evening after the other two projects that were presented. The Renaissance Collaborative presenting the Affordable Housing Development, just blocks from this location as well as the South Side Community Arts Center, right down the street with the enhancement to that great cultural amenity in the community. This project will provide new market rate and affordable housing in the Bronzeville community further south on Michigan Avenue. And so, again, thank you for this opportunity to present. I'm now happy to turn the microphone over to Sylvia Micus. Sylvia?
Thank you, Graham. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you, Graham, and also thank you, Alderman Dow, and residents of the Third Ward. I, as Graham mentioned, we are very much looking forward to showing you the proposed development by Capricorn Build and Design. So I'm going to start going through the PowerPoint. Right here is a survey of the property. The property is located at thirty-seven forty-six through sixty-six South Michigan Avenue. There are four lots. They are currently vacant. The property is right here, and it is a little south of Thirty-seventh, again, fronting South Michigan Avenue. And it is currently zoned RM five. Here is a photo of the existing property currently. Just a few photos of the vacant lots. Here's the more exciting part is the proposed rendering. As I mentioned, there are four separate lots, all zoned RM five. The proposed development is to construct four buildings, which will be constructed in four phases with each building on one of those four lots. And again, here's a rendering of each of the proposed buildings right here. Here's just our proposed site plan, again, for each of the proposed lots, the same site plan. Here you can see, hopefully you can see, we'll have a fifteen-foot front setback, the five-foot setbacks on either side of the buildings, and then a twenty-one-foot rear setback. You'll see here, and we'll show it on a more detailed plan, there is a ramp for the underground parking that is located in the basement. Moving on, again, this is just a combined site plan. Again, the four lots that I just mentioned, again, each will be constructed with the on the first phase, it will be a twenty-two unit building. On the second phase, it will be a twenty-three unit building. Third phase, twenty-three unit building, and the fourth phase, a twenty-two unit building. So the total proposed development will be a total of ninety odd dwelling units. Here are the floor plans. As I mentioned, this is the basement level, which will consist of two units, two one-bedroom, one-bath units, and also nine of our fifteen parking spaces. So nine of the parking spaces will be located inside in the basement. Also, we have twenty-six bike spaces.
Hey Sylvia?
Yes.
I hate to interrupt you, but I just, I just realized your presentation is sixty-six slides. That is way too many.
I'm going to stop. Actually, Alderman, I'm going to stop at probably like the next four, and that was it. A lot of the slides are for reference in case questions came up, Alderman, so I'm not going to go through all sixty-seven, I promise.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, no problem, not a problem at all. So first floor, again, we have one one-bedroom unit, the remaining are two-bedroom units. And here is the proposed floor plan for the second floor, the third floor, and the fourth floor, of which will contain five two-bedroom, two-bath units. Here is our roof plan. Here you will see we have forty percent of a green roof. Also, here we have pergolas, some amenities, et cetera. Open space, about seven hundred ninety-five square feet. Here just, here are just some examples of some potential renderings of how the rooftop will look in terms of amenities, and obviously you can see the seating, et cetera, on the on the rooftop. Here are the elevations. Again, these are little, small, so my apologies. The height of the buildings will be forty-seven feet. The materials will be of a dark red brick with matching mortar and also limestone trim. And I believe, this is my last last slide, and this just basically shows the proposed buildings in comparison in terms of height with its adjacent properties. And that's basically our presentation in terms of the PowerPoint. In terms of the zoning specifics, we are seeking a residential plan development with an underlying zoning of an RM five-point-five. As I mentioned before, currently, the property is zoned RM five. We are seeking the underlying zoning change to an RM five-point-five. And in terms of the square footage of each of the buildings is approximately about twenty-six thousand square feet. Also, we did want to mention about the ARO units. As I mentioned, the four buildings consist of twenty-two and twenty-three unit buildings. In the twenty-two unit buildings, which will be phases one and phases four, the first phase, twenty-two unit building, will contain, you know, four ARO units, which will contain one one-bedroom unit and three two-bedroom units. Phase two, a twenty-three unit building, will contain five ARO units with a mix of a one-one-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath unit and four two-bedroom units. Phase three, which is again a twenty-three unit building, will consist of five two-bedroom, two-bath units, which are ARO units. And then phase four, which is twenty-two units, and again, one one-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath unit and three two-two-bedroom units. So it'll be a total of eighteen ARO units within the entire development. And that's what we have for our presentation. Again, as I mentioned, you know, we are seeking a residential plan development with the underlying RM five-point-five zoning district. I am now going to turn this back over to my esteemed colleague Graham to conclude our presentation. So thank you.
Sylvia, thank you very much. Alderman, we're available to answer any questions. As I mentioned, we have the developer as well as the architect on on the Zoom call with us, and we're very excited to present this market rate and affordable project to the Third Ward.
Okay, thanks, Graham. First of all, I really would like to see you meet with your surrounding neighbors here specifically. I think you are going to be across the street from the South Side Community Arts Center, around the corner from the TRC project. And this is a major plot of land along Michigan Avenue. And I would like to make sure it is in context. And I think that this question from Butler Adams really reflects even some of my thoughts about this project. And his comment is, this looks to be a modern take on classic Chicago architecture and is quite nice. I hope there are slight differences in design between the buildings. Please consider varying brick color and course line to break up the repetition.
Thank you for those comments, Alderman, and thank you very much, Butler Adams. Butler Adams, I commend you. I can't, I can only imagine how many community meetings you go to and share your insights and perspectives. And you carry over a canvas of all the things you see and learn across the city and share your perspective, which we greatly appreciate. And we'll definitely consider your comments and suggestions.
Can I hear from John Hannah on that? He's the architect.
Yeah, it is true. It is with Butler Adams' suggestions, we were, we were already considering those things that he suggested. I think it's important.
Very nice. Thank you, Butler. Hold on, there are some other questions in here. Eric's, this comes from Eric Small. This person knows you, Graham, because he says, Graham, I'm on the board of St. Thomas Episcopal Church. We on the building to the south. Our board would be interested in a briefing.
Perfect. Eric, thank you. Eric and I grew up right across the street from each other, so it's, it's, it's a totally, totally small world. And also in the category of small world, you know, I was born at Providence Hospital and and lived very close to this site when I was a kid, and the church I grew up in is right down the street on Michigan Avenue. So it brings a lot of nice threads together for me, and we're very excited about this project moving forward. Eric, I will email you, and we can figure out a time to collaborate with regard to the building adjacent and the opportunity for communication about our project. So thank you.
Alright, and I'm going to combine the other, these other two questions because they're, they're looking for the same information from Eric Dansler and Anthony Rogers. One is asking about the projected rents, and the other one is wanting to know if these rental are for sale.
These are rental units, and I'm going to ask Jola Whipple to provide information about how far along they are in the protected rents for the units. Jola or Ian can probably answer that, or possibly Bart. Jola or Ian or Bart? Oh, I'm not, I'm not seeing them on the, I'm clicking
Bart is, hold on a second. I saw Bart, if that's the Bart I'm looking at. Hold on one second.
Yeah, Bart, Bart is on. Bart, you're on mute. I see
I will allow him to he was here. I didn't see him now.
He's all the way at the bottom on my, on my screen of participants. He's the, he's the last one. Oh, good, he's unmuted now. Bart, you want to introduce yourself and respond to the question, please? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Sorry for the the technical difficulties here. Yeah, I've been working with with Yul and Ian on this project and you know, our rental analysis is still a little preliminary for the market rate units. I think for the one bedrooms, we were looking at starting around eighteen hundred, raging to the low two thousands for the larger units. And then the ARO would be, and Sylvia might help me with this, but I think it was sixty percent from the AMI in the area.
Sixty percent on average AMI, that is correct.
Right.
Okay, the next question I have is from Mark Sinstack regarding the projected impact on the decline in Chicago's population on your development. Mark, I will say, I'll take a stab at this, and they can add on if they want. In two thousand, with the two thousand census, we saw a decrease in the population in the Third Ward, something to the tune of about fourteen thousand people. We have experienced an increase based on the twenty-twenty census. There was an increase in population from that decline that we noted in twenty-two thousand. I would say that we're seeing an increase in population with the other developments going on in the Third Ward. I think that's something that's very important with the addition of Forty-three Green, the work that has been done with the transformation properties at Park Boulevard, at Thirty-Fifth and State, along with other rehabs and new construction that we are seeing in the Third Ward. I believe that we're having an increase in population in the ward, and I believe that that can only be a benefit to the city of Chicago, an increase in the city's numbers as well. Graham, do you have anything you want to add to that, or Sylvia?
Very briefly, Alder Woman, thank you. Yeah, this, this project is a part of the solution, uh, because it will be providing, um, you know, a significant number of units here, uh, very close. We're just a block and a half from the, um, from the L station. Uh, this project will have market rate units as well as affordable units. Uh, and will also encourage and spur, uh, development nearby. We're actually right across the alley from the South Side YMCA. Um, and this, this development will encourage other developers to buy and renovate existing building stock as well as to build new building stock. So this is a part of the very positive upswing that we're seeing in Bronzeville, which is one of the hottest neighborhoods for development in Chicago, uh, especially for a multifamily. So I, I appreciate the question because this project is part of the solution.
Thank you. Um, another question I have here, is there an elevator in the building? That's from anonymous attendee.
Yes, there is.
Alright. Well, I don't see any additional, uh, questions. Um, we're now at seven fifty seven PM. I like to start my meetings on time and end on time. Um, if there are no burning questions that are in general in the chat, uh, that you have for me, uh, I want to thank everyone for coming to this, uh, Third Ward Town Hall meeting. And stay warm, everyone. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you for your leadership and service, Alder Dow.
Thank you, Alder Woman. Take care, everyone. Ali, everyone be well.
Thank you.